And Hector, I am going to go ahead and take over the PowerPoint presentation here. So just for council members, a reminder, if you are back, just turn on your screen and that way I'll know when we're ready to get started. All right, it looks like the gang's all here. Hector, are you ready?
I'm ready, Mayor.
Hey, Jordan, are we good to go?
We're ready.
Alright, so we'll call the Talent City Council regular meeting of April 6th to order at 6:51. We'll call please.
Councilor Clark.
Here.
Councilor Ponomo.
Here.
Councilor Greider.
Here.
Councilor Prestizo.
Here.
Councilor Byers.
Here.
Councilor Perry Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Eris Flood.
Here.
Mayor Yo Quorum.
Thank you, Hector. Item number two on the meeting agenda is accessibility 2.1 opportunity to interpret meetings into Spanish. Hector?
This is a question for the public. If any attendees need this meeting translated into Spanish, I would ask that they raise their hand now. Yes, una pregunta para el público. Si alguien necesita estar interpretando español, por favor, asuma uno hoy. And I'll watch the attendees if anybody would require this.
Thank you, Hector. Item number three on the agenda is additions corrections to agenda. Are there any additions or corrections? Let me open up my, I can't see everybody. One second here. I see a hand raised. Councilor Clark?
Yeah, I would like to add pizza for Arbor Day to the agenda under new business or under other business.
Well, you gotta love small town government.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. We got some serious issues to work out here tonight. Y'all stick around for the end of the meeting. It's going to be contentious.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. So what item number was that? I'm sorry?
11.4.
Okay. Given me, give me a lot to track here. Jordan, did you have some changes?
I do have a couple of requests for some agenda changes that I was not able to incorporate beforehand. If we can add another new business item in an 11.5 regarding a pollinator project proposal, it is time sensitive due to the growing season. And then I would also with council's permission, like to remove 11.3 from tonight's agenda. A lot of questions came in on this topic and I did not have time to gather the information needed and I would like to provide a much more robust report to help that conversation be more informed and more smooth.
Okay, so we're just going to remove it and not continue it. Is that correct? And you'll just put it on whatever agenda you you decide?
I will.
Okay, very good. Alright, so we're striking 11.3 from the agenda. Are there any other changes? Alright, seeing none. And Jordan, if you take your hand down. I won't, I won't call on you incessantly.
Let me just remember how. One second.
It's in the same spot where you raise your hand. Thank you. Okay, so I think I've got it. Let's see how on top of my game I am tonight. The next item on the agenda is item four, community announcements. Council, do you have any community announcements with a raise of hand? Councilor Clark?
I didn't know I was gonna have a nice visual to go with it, but yeah, this Saturday, 10 o'clock, starting at the middle school. We're going to plant 64 trees on the fields behind the middle school and 21 along Wagner Creek Road and adjacent areas at the elementary school. Just excited for the community to come together with the students, the families and the teachers and do something positive for the community and contribute to our climate resiliency.
Great news. And it's going to be a great big event and we hope to see everybody out there. And it sounds like we might want to notice that because we just like to be careful. Are there any other community announcements from council? Seeing none? Steph? Any community announcements?
Thank you, Mayor. I would love to invite up community engagement director Hector Flores to share a bit about the April 23rd event.
Hello, Mayor and hello, Council. On April 23rd, we're going to have a cleanup event at Lynn Newberry Park. It's the Bear Creek Stewardship Day. It's part of a larger cleanup effort along the Greenway from Ashland to Central Point. And our numbers have been going up every time we hold this and currently we have about 25 volunteers signed up for the event and we've reached out to our committees and commissions who will be participating in educational outreach and workshops during the event. So it's going to be, it's going to be a good one.
Thank you, Hector. And also Hector, you know, what a great job you've done on the outreach for this, this event. I think our numbers are growing because of the incredible outreach coming from your office and and these two visual displays and and just getting the word out, I think has been making a good, a big, big difference for these events and just want to thank you for the hard work that you're doing.
I thank you, Mayor.
Any other community announcements from staff? Jordan?
That's it, Maureen. Thank you, Mayor.
Right, moving on to item number five, speakers heard on non-agenda items. Are there any speaker request forms, Hector?
Mayor, we've received one speaker request from Lorian Levi, and I'm not sure of on the last name, but I do, I do know that they're in the attendees right now.
And did we lose our screen? Am I looking at a emblem of the city of talent today? Or did I, am I the only one who lost the screen?
Mayor, I stopped sharing so that we could, the presenter could see all faces.
Alright, so if we can bring Lorian forward, I, Lorian is a seasoned speaker before the community of talent and we would love to bring him forward and and Lorian, when you, when you make it to to the room here, please state your name and city for the record.
Um. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay.
Please state your name and city for the record.
Hi, my name is Lauren and I have a request to make.
Hey, and your city?
Talent, Oregon.
Very good.
I have an idea about building an RC dirt racetrack in Talent. There'd be more people coming to Talent to race cars and kids and adults would have fun. Thank you.
Sounds like it might also be a good thing to present to the Parks Commission as well.
Yeah.
Good to see you again, Lorian. I don't think you've been before since you were about probably six years old. Time flies.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
I just have to say that Lorian's been speaking before this council since he was about three years old and he's, he's been a lot, he's represented a lot of good change for the community, especially around the use of pesticides. Okay, the next item, so there are no more speaker request forms, Hector, just for verification?
Mayor, there are no more speaker requests, although I do want to add that there's 17 people attending today.
So we'll give the speakers in the attendee room an opportunity to raise their hand if they wish to speak on non-agenda item. You are given five minutes to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. The show of hand. Alright, and there is a caller, I think you can star six if you want to connect and speak out on non-agenda item. Okay, seeing none. Let's go ahead and move to item number six on the agenda, public presentation 6.1 is Rogue River Watershed Council, Bear Creek Flood Plane Restoration Project Staff Report.
Matt John Speaks and Eugene Weir have joined us tonight to share about a grant application that they're preparing. Later in May, we do expect a letter of support to come before council on this project. So Eugene and John wanted to get before you all to share really the details of their projects and how they feel like it can really help talent in the rest of the Valley community. With that, John and Eugene, I'll hand it off to you.
Great. Thanks, Eugene. Thanks for being on too. Yeah, thanks for having us tonight. As Jordan said, we'll be seeking a letter of support for this project that we'll present on this evening. I'd like to share my screen if that's possible for a presentation. Let's see if I can make this a full screen. There we go. You guys got that? So yeah, again, thanks for, thanks for having us here tonight. Eugene and I were on a call earlier today with the Bear Creek Restoration Initiative, talking about this same project. How long do we have for this?
15 minutes.
Okay, thanks. So we're calling this the Bear Creek River Mile 19.0 Talent Flood Plane Project. We call it River Mile 19.0 because that's from the mouth of Bear Creek up to where it is. Leonardly there from, so from the Rogue River up to Talent is about 19 miles. And let's see, how do I? Eugene, do, let me back up, I guess, here. So in maybe November, I met with Councilor Clark and Eugene on site along Bear Creek there down by Lynn Newbury. They brought me into this project that they'd already been talking about. Maybe Eugene can talk about the background of how you guys ended up there.
Yeah, real quick, I'm Eugene Weir with the Freshwater Trust and a partner, the Freshwater Trust is a potential partner to this project. Building on some of the work we're already doing in and around Talent and City of Ashland. This really was born out of Jason and I walking along the Greenway post-fire, looking at ways that ecological work, work that would benefit the ecology of the Bear Creek Corridor could also be utilized to prevent a future fire like the Alameda Fire or a flood from creating damage to the community. So an opportunity to sort of think about what could be done to reshape the vegetation and floodplain in a way that would protect the community and deliver environmental benefits to the stream and to users of the Bear Creek Corridor. So that's where we had started and we began to look at some of the opportunities there when the opportunity to get money to fund some of this work from OWEB came about through our connection with John and the Rogue River Watershed Council.
Yeah, so it was last fall, OWEB Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board announced a post-fire grant offering for 13 fire areas throughout the state that were affected by the 2020 fires. And so Eugene and Eugene and I started talking about, well, how can we apply for those funds and where should we put those dollars on the ground? And collectively, we felt this is an appropriate area. So I'll scroll back up again. So you can see here on the image, that's Lynn Newbury Park. We have three tiles there, so three rectangles that highlight our project area. Those are really part of the concept designs, the engineering specs that I can share with you if you'd like later on, but that kind of gets into the weeds a bit. So really, the overall goal of this project is to provide ecological components in the form of improved water quality, stream processes, and aquatic and terrestrial habitats that build a proper functioning ecosystem. So what we're trying to do is reconnect Bear Creek with the historic floodplain to achieve multiple ecological goals. And this is a great location, as Eugene said, because that floodplain, so that area around the creek there in Lynn Newbury, there's room for the creek to move a bit. And connecting with the floodplain is important because one, in the event of floodwaters, provides a location for those waters to spread out thinner and not be as powerful coming down Bear Creek. And when that happens, the ground there actually captures and stores water that is available for late-season release. So in its hot summer months, when Bear Creek is low, those waters are released out of the floodplain back into the creek. So there's multiple locations along Bear Creek that are suitable for this type of work. So bullet point two there talks about this as a first phase of a potential multi-phase project. So Eugene put this map together here. So in that yellow circle, that red polygon there is where we're thinking about this first phase. But as Eugene said, him and Councilor Clark had been walking that whole area upstream towards Ashland. And it's kind of ripe for this type of restoration. So going in, restoring in-stream processes, riparian ecosystems, replanting the riparian areas, sorry, to provide a functioning ecosystem there. So our overall project objectives for this project are to increase that flood conveyance, reduce flood level risk, capture overbank flows like I was just talking about, high flows, that water goes out across the floodplain and settles out. Restore the native riparian forests, improve terrestrial and aquatic wildlife, what we do for all these type of projects, wildlife viewing opportunities for the public, improve public safety. So we're talking about removing blackberries if they're growing back, improving line of sight for folks on the Greenway and then improving, supporting recreational activities and Greenway management activities that we know all the designated managing agencies have to do. And then we also think about connecting and integrating and visiting tributaries, Wagner Creek, some springs and seeps that are coming off the bank there between Highway 99 and Bear Creek, trying to accent those to produce a more ecologically beneficial ecosystem. So we've already begun work on this project planning. This is a large-scale project. So just in the scheme of things, these are, this is not a small project. This is pretty big. So we've begun initial data collection. That includes we've been flying a drone, collecting imagery and LiDAR. That informs our design process. It gives us an idea of what's actually present on the ground. It's really cool. It's really cool technology to use in this, in this setting. So we were doing a riparian vegetation inventory through that. We're collecting data on existing infrastructure around there. We've got our design level survey already in place. We're identifying areas to remove any soils that come out of the project where those are going to go. Potentially, those could be used for rebuilding some of the mobile parks that burned after the Alameda Fire, raising the elevation in those areas. We've got a source, large wood. So what we want to do in this project is ultimately reconnect historic side channels, providing cold water refuge and over summering for juvenile fish. And then also, we need a source, large wood, because we're going to put wood into those side channels. And then we'll, this summer, we'll blanket that area with temperature data loggers, collecting baseline temperature data. Once we have those concept designs to a level, we'll go to state agencies and get approval. ODOT has already expressed support for this project. It's on ODOT property. And we will get a letter of support from them as well. So these are the actions that we are proposing to do in that area. Again, increase floodplain connectivity by removing berms that are in Bear Creek, enhance those side channel connections, providing habitat for aquatic wildlife. Increase channel complexity, so we'll incorporate large wood structures in Bear Creek and along the banks. Those will help to create thermal refuge and with tributary cold water inputs. There's many places in that area where Bear Creek, where the banks are eroding at a fairly rapid rate. That is going to be problematic for downstream drinking water providers. There's also a couple of locations that look like the Greenway itself is in jeopardy over the next several years. If there's some high-flow events, so we'd like to address those. And then preserve and improve recreational opportunities, however that looks. So there's potential for phase two or phase three, having some interpretive trails around the area. We can construct designated access paths to view wildlife, etc. So right now, we are seeking this letter of support for this grant opportunity for OWEB, which Eugene kind of touched on. Historically, OWEB has not been interested in investing in Bear Creek. The Watershed Council, we apply for OWEB grants every cycle, but we focus our work primarily in upper part of the road. But this is a unique funding opportunity and we feel like we need to pursue it in May. And so we are asking for letters of support from all partner organizations. So the immediate actions are getting those letters of support, going into overdrive, drafting that grant narrative and budget, soliciting other partners for match, cash match, or other type of match. And then we'll also start developing a potential community support and outreach plan. This is such a high-visibility project that provides a great opportunity for the public to watch a post-fire restoration project happen, which I think is very meaningful for community members. Actually, our engineer Joey, our contract engineer, told me today on the phone that he, he actually got emotional about this project because the people that passed him when we were flying a LiDAR were expressing how happy they are. Something of this scale might be happening in their area. So that's, I think that's really neat to provide that for the community. And then that map that highlighted multiple different colored polygons during this process will also start planning future phases and what that looks like. So the timeline for this is to get landowner agreements and letters of support in place. We'll apply for the grant in May. Go through the permitting. Beginning August through March of next year, it's a pretty heavy load. We'll finalize logistics, final designs and planning. And then we'll go into contracting next year. And then we'll implement next summer and in the next fall is what we're hoping to do. We feel it's about a six to eight week implementation period. So that red polygon, our initial area of interest for this project is about 18 acres. I think, I think that sounds right. 18 to 20 acres in there. If for some reason, the cost of diesel right now is going up pretty rapidly and that affects these type of projects. If we, if the budget becomes too high, we'll scale that back just a little bit to fit what funds we have available. And that's about it. I feel like we just sped through that. It's a pretty large project. And I'm happy to field any questions. I could also through another screen, share the design concepts, but they're really pretty detailed. So with that being said, Eugene or Councilor Clark, do you guys have anything to add to that?
Good work, John. Like you said, you know, multiple times, this is a complex project, but a wonderful opportunity for talent to become much more resilient, to gain more watchable wildlife and to make it lands and adjacent lands more manageable in the future. So it's a great spot, great project to do this. We're really lucky to have an opportunity with OWEB, you know, to get some things like that started, get the first phase in the ground and get moving on it. Future phases may be able to address, you know, in phase two or three, the ponds, which are properties owned by talent that have tremendous opportunity for additional wildlife habitat and watchable wildlife opportunities for the public. So we would look forward to engaging more with the we would look forward to engaging more with the city over the coming months and years as this project phases through to get, you know, all the objectives that the city might like to see incorporated into future design. So thank you.
Yeah.
I might just add sort of the, the context for historical stormwater management, stream management was to essentially turn our creeks into ditches as much as possible. And so Phil was dumped in the floodplain, side channels were deliberately cut off, you know, the old stormwater management was get that water in the pipe and get it out of here as quickly as possible. And of course, now we've become enlightened and understand that what we need to do is slow down and filter that water and allow it to spread out in the areas where it can spread out safely. And when we do that, we reduce flooding risk and we also get all kinds of ecological benefits at the same time. So that's kind of the, the spirit of, in which this project is being conceived.
Councillor Penamra.
Yeah, this, this is so beneficial in so many ways. So thank you for that. One of the things I think you mentioned about how this can aid in terms of fire prevention. I heard removing the blackberries, I heard keeping more moisture in the ground during the hot summer months. I was wondering if you could summarize how, how this project will help us avoid another fire like the Almeida.
Well, I can take that one because we have, the freshwater trust has done riparian restoration within the city of talent in the past. And one of the areas we restored was behind the Brammo building there between there and the lot where the coffee kiosk is. And when that site burned in the fire, it did not burn the same way much of the Greenway did that had blackberry. It actually retained its tree canopy and regenerated into a native dominated plant community because it had been previously restored. So we found that the fire burned in less intensity in that area too. And that was part of what saved that home that is inset into that section of floodplain forest there. We think that resilient native plant communities are much less prone to burning hot and burning in a catastrophic way. And so as you mentioned, wetter, more native dominated, less flammable weeds are both ecologically benefit beneficial, but they're also a huge, you know, safety buffer for the city versus having something, you know, that burns right at your back door.
Thank you.
Councillor Byers.
Thank you. This is such an exciting project to see. Thanks for this presentation. I'm really curious what it would look like if you need to scale back a little bit.
Yeah, I, I was out there with someone from Rogue Valley Council of Governments a couple of weeks ago. We just kind of tossed around, you know, what that would look like. It would just be reducing the total acreage. So it would be taking that stream length and shrinking it down a bit. Just to get within our kind of tentative budget that we'll come up with. And again, there's going to be a lot of material coming out of there that we'll have to find disposal for, you know, appropriate disposal. And it's just that, that logistics, that cost of stuff, a diesel time. And we're a year out. Who knows what that's going to look like a year from now. So if anything, we would probably cut a few acres off it, five acres and just phase that in to the next phase.
Thank you.
Well, I hope that doesn't happen. You know, this is an example of what building back more resilient looks like. And and we all know the extraordinary resources it's going to take to get there. So I just, I'm really hopeful that you're able to do the whole project. You know, we've, we've often commented that if the blackberries had caught fire on Wagner Creek on the other side of the bridge, on the other side of Talon Avenue, it would have been a whole different scenario there. So we know that our, our, our safety and our ability to be more resilient is going to depend on projects like this. So thank you so, so much for the work, not to mention the environmental piece. An extraordinary opportunity. And thank you councillor, councillor Clark for, you know, pushing, pushing forward on this, this type of work. Okay. Are there any other comments or questions before we go ahead and move on? Your heroes to talent, gentlemen. Thank you. So with that, we'll go ahead and move on to item number seven, which is committee and commission appointments. We want to mention that this afternoon Josh Gross withdrew his planning commission application. I had a great conversation with him. He was a referral from Michelle Glass. I know that he was very, very interested. But his, his, he's had some life changes that changed his ability to be committed. And I really value that level of responsibility. It's hard to, to make a commitment and then, and then pull back from it. But it's also a really responsible choice. So we won't be reviewing Josh Gross's application tonight, but I do want to, you know, state for the record that our gratitude for this application has not waned and that we thank him very much for that. So with that, we will move to the Parsina Kurth application. I conducted my interview actually at the T-PAC meeting where she had an interview with mayor's office as well as an interview with the committee and commission. So I'm happy to let the liaison make a comment or two if she'd like, and then I'll ask for a mayoral appointment. Councillor Perry Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just say briefly that the committee was very excited to have another person join. They voted unanimously to support her. And yeah, she's really excited and hopes to be able to continue her work as an artist.
Great. Thank you. And that's what we all found very exciting opportunity for our community to have somebody like Parsina step up for this kind of service. So with that, I will ask for a motion. Councillor Perry Miller.
I move to approve the mayoral appointment of Parsina Kurth as an alternate member of the City of Talent Public Arts Committee for a two-year term beginning April sixth, twenty twenty-two.
We have a motion and a second to approve the mayoral appointment of Parsina Kurth as an alternate member of the City of Talent Public Arts Committee for a two-year term, term beginning April sixth, twenty twenty-two. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councillor Clark?
Yes.
Councillor Penamra?
Yes.
Councillor Greider?
Yes.
Councillor Pesezo?
Yes.
Councillor Byers?
Yes.
Councillor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Great news. Okay. And our next applicant is for the Talent Urban Forestry Committee. We had a demonstration tonight of the great work that they, that they get themselves involved in. And we'll see that again this weekend with the Arbor Day celebration. Very valuable group, a great interview with Mr. Lanny. And I will ask councillor Clark liaison to T U F C for any comments.
Yeah. We're excited to have Jack involved. He's already been engaged in various products, projects in the city and the committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of his appointment. We're excited to have him on board.
Thank you so much. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the mayoral appointment of Jack Lani as an alternate member of the City of Talent Urban Forestry Committee for a two-year term beginning April sixth, twenty twenty-two.
We have a motion and a second to approve the mayoral appointment of Jack Lani as an alternate member of the City of Talent Urban Forestry Committee for a two-year term beginning April sixth, twenty twenty-two. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councillor Clark?
Yes.
Councillor Penamra?
Yes.
Councillor Greider?
Yes.
Councillor Pesezo?
Yes.
Councillor Byers?
Yes.
Councillor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Right. Exciting times. I definitely want to just remind everybody that some of the, we, we as a team do some of the best recruiting. So we still have some openings and planning. And so let's just keep beating the bushes and find ourselves the next great planning commissioner. With that, we'll move on to item eight is the city manager's report. Steph?
Thanks, Mayor. You all had my report in the agenda packet, which summarizes the major activities that I'm engaging in right now. I am more than happy to answer any questions, but before I do, I want to give a shout out to our finance director who is three days into the job now, Tessa Delain joins us and is already being a great team member. So she will come up before you all in future meetings.
Good news. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, I think I speak on behalf of the council and we say a mighty welcome aboard, Tessa Delain. We are looking forward to to the great work ahead. Alrighty, so the next item on the agenda, let me get back to my agenda. Start reading staff reports and then I get lost here. Item eight point two is the Fire Recovery and Resiliency Director Report. Steph?
Yeah, I'm going to invite John Legarza to present. I'm going to go ahead and stop screen sharing. John, I'll let you take it from here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. John Legarza here with Healthy Sustainable Communities. Happy to be recording in this evening on the resiliency work here too. Our progress here in rebuilding stronger together as part of our HSC's professional service agreement with the city of talent. Our team has started with expansive scope of work within February and continues to build stronger programming outreach surrounding the fire recovery and resiliency activities on the behalf of talent. There are some key areas of focus within our work around housing development, affordable housing business, funding and support for the council and staff there. Start with our monthly update here. Each month we provide a council with a monthly update there. And tonight, task one. So within the past month, HSC team has employed twenty twenty census data to update the figures on the housing availability and affordability gap that was previously competed with the Eco Northwest. Within our analysis of the new census data, we found sizable decreases in available housing for households earning less than seventy-five K. Concurrently, we found sizable decreases in excess housing for households with income of more than a hundred K. These findings we presented to the city council meeting priority are pointing to the urgency of the talent community to complete and updated HNA to complete its current housing availability and develop resources to bolster access for housing to all community members. And HNA is the useful for public policy and often drives more from explanation of underlying assumptions about the dynamics of the markets and policies. That from the specific estimates of future demand and need. Nonetheless, an analysis with talent has found gaps in the dynamics of the market such as housing inflation and further analysis and equity need within the demographics. We also know that there have been unimaginable events that occurred since the twenty seventeen report. Hence, we want to briefly look at the update on the status of unmet housing needs since the report up until twenty twenty to give us a sense of how things have changed even before the fire and then a look moving forward and what changes we can expect since the fire. In the five years since the unmet, unmet housing needs was uncovered, the disparity of affordable housing availability has grown larger between households with income under and over seventy-five K. The bar charts above helped to understand that talent is on attainable housing from the twenty nineteen, twenty sixteen ecoanalysis utilized in the same mythology that was completed by Eco Northwest. We can understand the changes in housing by income in town. So the chart on the left here, and hopefully you can see my cursor here. This was the twenty sixteen, several of the council members have seen this. This was the data that was used in the twenty seventeen Eco Northwest report. In that report, we were able to identify that under twenty-five thousand, there was a deficit of six hundred and six units of affordable housing. Between the twenty-five to fifty K, there was three hundred and forty-seven surplus units. Going to the right, there was a negative deficit of seventy between fifty and seventy-five K. There is a surplus of two hundred and twenty-five from seventy-five K to a hundred thousand and a surplus of forty-one K above that. When you look at the twenty twenty data here, what's interesting is there's been a decrease to four thirty-five in the units under twenty-five K. But there has now become a huge swing of a negative eighty-seven deficit, eighty-seven units in the deficit between twenty-five K and fifty K. There's also a deficit of a hundred and thirty-three units between the fifty K and seventy-five K and a surplus of two hundred and forty-two units between seventy-five K and three hundred and seventy-six per over a hundred thousand units per K. So look at the, look into an updated unmet housing needed analysis shines light on a widening disparity in the missing market dynamics such as inflation that must be addressed in the future housing need analysis. So on the top right-hand side here, for households making over seventy-five K, that's only eighteen percent of talent. The existing surplus and affordable housing has grown from two hundred and sixty-six to six hundred and eighteen units. On the other hand, for households under seventy-five K, which is eighty-two percent of talent, the deficit has increased from two hundred and sixty-six to six hundred and fifty-five units. The census data suggests the impact of housing inflation leading to a boom in units of housing, households making over a hundred K in talent. For households making over a hundred K, there was a eight hundred and seventeen percent increase in affordable housing units, the second largest increase unit increase of three hundred and thirty-five. This increase was not from building of the housing units, since there was only a three percent increase in housing units. That's equivalent to less than one unit a month over the last four years. Hence, it's likely explained by the inflation of housing values over the last few years, an element that was not considered in the last HNA. Census data reveals real-time disparity in affordable housing options with households making under seventy-five thousand being squeezed with limited affordable housing options. Number one, between fifty and seventy-five K, even between those in the fifty to seventy-five K affordable housing units has decreased almost entirely due to the increase in households in this range. Number two, for incomes between twenty-five and fifty K, a reversal from a surplus, which was three forty-seven to a deficit of a negative eighty-seven is a hundred and twenty-five percent decrease is the largest unit increase of four hundred and thirty-four units. Only a quarter of this change was due to rental and housing. The other three quarters due to the increases of households with incomes in this range. It's important to note that the median household income from talent is thirty-six thousand fifty-one dollars in twenty twenty-two. Number three, for incomes less than twenty-five thousand, the twenty twenty deficit of four hundred and thirty-five unit offers the only improvement over two hundred and sixteen for those income ranges, although still a very large deficit. It's also important to note that there is a two hundred and twelve percent increase in talent for households making less than a hundred K a year. That increased from two forty-three to five fifty-four households in twenty twenty, twenty twenty. In summation, our update of the unmet housing needs analysis finds areas of further exploration that would be needed to situate talent to rebuild housing in a manner addresses the disparities. Overall, the unmet housing needs analysis shows a widening gap in affordable housing for those making under seventy-five K. For households making over seventy-five K, their surplus in housing comes from inflating buys of homes. A HNA needs to address the rise in housing prices as part of the market dynamics that played a better informed policy decision-making for talent. For households making under seventy-five K or eighty-two percent of the town households, affordable housing has gotten much tighter. Census shows a two hundred and twelve percent increase in houses making less than a hundred K. This raises question about what sort of affordable housing units should be explored? Given the gap in census data around manufacturing housing, this is an important area of exploration needed. A new housing needs analysis needs to address key segments of talents housing such as inflation in the housing market, the manufactured housing section, and chiefly the impact of fire. Three things for the council to consider. Number one, Three things for the council to consider. Number one, inflation. As evidenced by the appreciation of housing values leading to the boom and surplus affordable housing for housing households over seventy-five K, a HNA must segment out the housing versus rental market in its analysis to better understand the dynamics and implication of housing inflation on talent. Number two, manufactured housing. An estimated fifteen percent of talent lived in manufactured housing and was a segment of housing disproportionately impacted by the fires. An HNA should emphasize an analysis of this segment of housing. Number three, pre and post Alameda fire. The difference between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty was large, but nothing like what we'll expect from the impacts of COVID in Alameda fire. A new HNA must look into the data best available for the impact of the fires to real validate prior HNA models and policy recommendations. Task number two, within the past month, the HSC team has worked on author report that details the potential space yields of each, of each site and provided specific recommendations surrounding how sites could be used in the future to provide additional transitional housing. Concurrently, the HSC team has been working with potential affordable housing developers within talent and is learning that cost to construct multifamily development are quickly increasing within the Rogue Valley with many developers citing greater than three hundred thousand dollars per unit delivered cost, tampering their ability to obtain financing or execute purchase and sale agreements to move forward with projects. These conversations, the HSC team is working to steer developers to funding partners to help realize their projects within the city of talent. The city started looking at other transitional options in last quarter of twenty twenty-one. In October twenty twenty-one, the city identified tax loss for consideration for transitional housing. Using the same design criteria as the gateway project, the estimated unit yields are presented above for the city of Dennisite sites. In planning for future natural disasters, one of these sites could be pre-conception designed to assist in future recovery efforts and better position talent for quicker recovery. However, at this time, additional transitional housing and temporary accommodation sites are coming along line. As such, we are currently recommend focusing on alternative sites that are owned by private property owners coordinated with funding such as OHCS, OCF, etc. to identify infrastructure sunny that could bring more residents back home. The good news is that some firefighters are working with ODHS, OHCS and access this community for resilient center to get back home. The top left is the talent mobile states and the top right is Wagner states. Both of these parks have seen recent families move back into talent, approximately an additional twenty-three units. The downside is the gateway site has applications on the waiting list. And if talent wants to consider additional transitional housing solutions, talent could consider how talent mobile states or other sites could be considered in the recovery process. For instance, OHCS is working to provide a bridge loan to Casa for the talent mobile, mobile state site. Other sites could also provide strategic spaces to bring families back home. Task number three, the HSC team has finalized the acquisition of property owner outreach data from industry leading property data provider. Our team is currently segmenting data to prioritize outreach to large parcel owners of both residential commercial properties within town. Within this task, our team focused on determining underlying factors that are hampering redevelopment. According to most recent city data, the pace of redevelopment is decelerating, but fewer owners are applying for rebuilding permissions every month. In this process, it's important to understand the barriers that property owners are experiencing rebuilding while clearly communicating to property owners centered on providing partners and solutions that could help realize development within the city of talent. Our team continues to learn that property owners still have significant insurance gaps to rebuild and lack funding to rebuild at current construction rates. Highway ninety-nine was an auto eccentric sprawl that occurred in several communities in America. As you enter talent on the north and south of highway ninety-nine, property owners are struggling to find solutions to help them in the rebuilding process. The picture in the middle is the towing company that you enter on the south side of coming into town. In discussions with this property owner, he has expressed interest in rebuilding, but his main concern is understanding what uses can be placed on the property. Providing assistance to property owners grants through three D modeling, performing analysis of market studies could provide owners with the direction in the rebuilding process. Task number four, the HSC team continues to develop a document in PowerPoint that surveys current housing programs within talent and the Rogue Valley that could benefit displaced residents. Currently, information on housing with the Rogue Valley is centralized, is decentralized with different organizations providing a snapshot of housing availability and resources. Additionally, there's no current city level information of affordable housing resources and programs within smaller cities in the Rogue Valley. Once complete, this task will provide a one-stop resource to elected leaders, city staff to refer to those who need a current housing. However, concurrently, the HST team has found that most affordable housing providers have little to no availability for new residents. With the largest affordable housing provider within the valley, the Housing Authority of Jackson currently, currently has no units available for immediate need. Task number five is dependent on task number four's outcomes. Task number six.
Hey, John, I do see a question from Jordan. Jordan, should we just go ahead and let, let him get through the, the report and then we'll circle back to questions?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay, I can't see the hands because my screen, I'm sorry.
Sure, sure. But go ahead and leave your hand up so I know, I know who has questions.
Okay, thank you. Task number six, over the past month, the HST team reviewed the survey results on the SOU graduate student business survey. After a detailed review of the survey results, we produced a presentation on the key figures and metrics associated with business recovery within talent. With this analysis, we found that more than forty-five percent of businesses are seeking forms of technical assistance that the city or other public entities and nonprofits could provide with the talent in a long-term recovery. Small businesses is a backbone of the community serving local residents and are significant contributors to economic growth and development. Yet forty to sixty percent of businesses that experience natural disaster never open, reopen. SOU had survey characteristics. They surveyed, there was a hundred and eighty-three businesses registered in the talent area. Sixty-three businesses were reached through the survey and fifty-five are eligible respondents. Eighty-three percent of the talent businesses primarily serve local residents, of which fifty percent of the customers are from the Rogue Valley. With only sixty-seven percent of the businesses considering re-opening in the talent market. Alongside with the impacted businesses, the most difficult barriers are uncertainty around the community's future and their aid. To get a look at the biggest barriers facing business reentering, SOUS businesses rank a variety of factors, barriers that are either not a problem or extremely difficult. To get a sense of what are the most difficult barriers are, SOU looked at extremely difficult rankings. In doing so, of all the businesses, twenty-nine businesses found that receiving government aid is the most difficult barrier. In total, forty-two percent of them ranked this as the most difficult barrier. This is followed by thirty-five businesses that found community recovery to be a barrier with forty percent of them ranking it as also the most difficult. Thirty-three businesses found financial risk, entry and twenty-nine with insurance coverage. So you also noticed receiving government aid echoes concerns around capital and a larger problem of businesses getting access to information. And further study on Hurricane Katrina impacted businesses reinforces server roads around community recovery recommends public community redevelopment plan. As we move, as we move forward to see how best to serve our business community in rebuilding, we looked at SOU's results on what factors. Then what will benefit businesses most in the rebuilding? The top two factors echo the two top challenges, aid in the form of monetary aid and rebuilding community. But the results also show that by far their largest need is technical assistance to help businesses within the community with forty-eight businesses seeking forms of technical assistance. In sum, revitalizing small businesses, the council can consider them as the backbone, a majority of businesses impacted by the fires. Critical to overall recovery of talent. The two top challenges that businesses face is uncertainty around the community redevelopment and technical assistance in the form of governmental assistance and monetary aid. Thirty-three percent of the businesses do not even know where to begin or where to apply for assistance. Some recommendations for the council to consider. Business outreach hub, the major problem for small businesses during disaster recovery is identifying and applying for sources of financing. Number two, technical assistance, forty-eight percent of businesses would benefit from forms of technical assistance that could be hosted at the hub. Number three, community development block grant, a proposal was developed for talent in the summer of twenty twenty to provide economic development and relocation assistance for micro enterprise businesses. Talent could consider this or other community development lock opportunities in the future. Number seven, the HSC team continues to communicate with key funding partners with the underlying aim to help shape development of future funds that talent could use to rebuild stronger together. OHCS is currently preparing to develop programs that distribute hub funding that has been earmarked for the fire recovery across the state of Oregon. As part of this effort, the mayor of City of Talent has been appointed to help shape OHCS, OHCS's program and targeted counties across Oregon, the seven counties that were impacted. This achievement by the Taylor's mirror to receive this precision might reflects the leadership of a talent's ongoing commitment to the community and fire recovery ensuring long-term affordable housing for all community members. So the next thing I want to talk about is after having OHCS come and talk to the city council twice, our staff gathered potential programs and thoughts and suggestions for the mayor to have in the early recovery discussions. I'm going to talk about each program, I just highlight each one and the potential funding requests. Again, this is very early stages. These are not programs that have been decided upon. There'll be community engagement, town halls in May.
Before we jump into this, I'm going to go ahead and take questions on the, on the report that you just gave.
Sure.
I, I think this will be generate perhaps two, two conversations. So Jordan, you had some questions on the report?
John, my question is from your analysis of the American Community Survey. Actually, before I want to get started, I just want to let know folks who are listening in, you know, just to help us keep track of questions, public records. If you have a question, please, you know, raise your hand or pop it into the Q and A section. I have currently disabled chat just to help keep distractions down. John, my question with the ACS twenty twenty data, is, is that data reflective of post-fire talent? Or is that just projections based off of twenty twenty as a whole?
It's twenty twenty, it doesn't have the post-fire.
Okay, thank you. So my assumption would be that it would be a much changed housing needs post-fire than what that data represents.
It could probably be even greater, Jordan.
Thank you.
And John, just for clarification, because I did see a question in the chat and, and actually I had the same question, but actually probably more of a comment. There was a typo in there because it's obvious that the data was for under a hundred thousand, under a hundred thousand K. And that's what you said in your, in your narrative, but in the report it said ten K. Can you just clarify for, for the record that that was a typo or not? I mean, I don't think we measure under ten K anymore, but.
Let me go back to that slide that Vicky had the question on. I think it's. So here, here's the slide, Vicky, the census data. In two hundred and, there was a two hundred and twelve percent increase in households making less than ten K. So this question really, this is an interesting question that the, you know, the housing need analysis really needs to take a deeper dive in there and explore. This has been a significant area of growth in that population. It could be, you know, I don't want to speculate, it could be seniors that are on social security. It could be agriculture workers, but that number went from two hundred and forty-three households in twenty sixteen to four hundred and fifty-four households in twenty twenty.
So, so it was, it was ten K, not a hundred K? I mean, that's staggering. That is a staggering statistic.
It is a staggering statistic. It's a, it's a challenge that needs to have in the housing needs analysis, take a deeper dive and understand what that is.
Unbelievable. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
I would have never guessed that.
Yeah, it's. Sorry, my dogs are acting up. So here, where are we at here?
Are there any other questions on the report before we move on to the proposed, the proposed grid that, that will be working off of at the ad hoc level?
I just wanted to make a further clarifying point.
Byers? You're on mute, Council Byers, and then we'll go to Council Pustizo.
Thank you. I can see a follow-up comment in the Q and A and I too heard a hundred K instead of ten K and it is so easy to misspeak when speaking numbers. So just to clarify for the record, if the amount, when referencing the slide, this, the text of the slide said ten K, but the reading of the slide said one hundred K, we are still speaking about ten K from the presentation, correct?
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
And then any other questions that go into the Q and A typically are, are addressed after the meeting. I mean, we don't engage in dialogue during the meeting as per our counselor rules, so. And we just had a presentation on some of that information as well. So if we don't get to your Q and A, it's just because typically we don't answer them during the meeting. We, we get back to them. So Council Pustizo.
Yeah, John, I just wanted to clarify, when Jordan was asking her question, she referred to the data you used for twenty twenty as the American Community Survey. And I just wanted to verify, was it really the American Community Survey or was it the ten-year census? Because there's a big difference in, you know, the sample sizes and the accuracy of the data. I'm assuming it was the twenty twenty census, but I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, I'll confirm that. I've got the US census, you know, twenty fourteen to twenty-five, but I'll confirm and let you know.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so let's go ahead and move on to the, the second part of the presentation.
Okay, great. Okay, yeah, so I'm going to highlight, these are again the council, we had OHCS come and talk to the council a couple of times and gather input and suggestions as the mayor moves forward with the recovery committee on some suggestions and ideas here again. Again, I want to say that this is all over early stage in that in May, there'll be town halls valuing, you know, gathering input around the potential programs. But these are some suggestions. On the left is manufacturer home replacement. We know manufactured housing was the drastic impact in, in Jackson County. Looking at, you know, funding requests up to two hundred thousand per home or possibly the state establishes a direct purchase and transfer of manufactured home to impacted owners. And also looking at the installation costs up to fifty thousand to help with installation cost. The next one down is manufacturer home repair. We know some of the folks that did survive the fire there that had some fire damage. So providing ability up to twenty thousand for that. Involuntary displaced personnels with forty-two months of housing rental assistance or comparable housing unit. Single-family housing reconstruction up to three hundred thousand. Single-family housing rehabilitation, we know in some of the, in some of the other counties, there could be up to, you know, potentially if their homes were impacted. So up to seventy-five thousand plus, some of those are in floodplain areas up to fifty thousand to help to elevation to, in those repairs. Lot acquisition priorities for shared equity projects up to a hundred and fifty thousand per lot or current, or current fair market valuation. Oregon's been very progressive on developing mass timber CLT projects here in Oregon. They were successful with the Port of Portland DLCD and they have a pilot project that they're trying to help scale up that. And also in some of the counties that were impacted, there are some DR Johnson and Ferris lumber and a large CLT mass timber manufacturer. So potential to look at that as a way to help scale up the housing solution can be anywhere from a hundred and fifty thousand per family unit up to two hundred thousand for home. Temporary rental assistance quite common in disaster recovery up to twenty thousand. I think this is another really important one that cities and counties would want to consider is administration staff support. Really thinking about positions for limited duration, could be up to three years for a position. There's definitely going to be needed in cities and counties for housing coordinators, community engagement, public works and engineering support and especially even more in the rural areas. We talked, you know, again about the economic vitality of business support. It's not a large component of the HUD program. But it is also an opportunity to get conversation to look at how we can help the businesses recover from technical assistance up to fifteen thousand per property owner or even looking at, you see a lot of time in natural disaster areas for global loans up to a hundred thousand could be suggested there. Moving down to infrastructure, this is a high priority in all areas and all cities and. Moving down to infrastructure, this is a high priority in all areas and all cities and counties that really looking at how communities get water, wells, power, gas, storm retention in their communities, right? Some suggestions around $1,000, I mean, a million dollars for communities located maybe inside a UGB per project with greater than 20 units or for projects in rural areas, which are even more challenging to get water and sewer into those areas there too. We all know that permit fees and SDCs are continuing to make projects challenging to rebuild. That there has to come in some different types of gap funding for that. So now's a chance to really look at how we can carve up to maybe 10,000 per unit for eligible projects for that too. Lastly, the last three that I think are important to consider that, you know, there, there are maybe an opportunity to create some bridge loan structures. For example, we talked about talent mobile states. OHS is stepping in to help on a bridge loan for that. Be able, if we have a project that is shovel ready or close to ready, looking at how that could be funded to help eligible projects move forward. Transitional homes. So if a home was, if someone had a home and, and potentially to put smaller multifamily dwelling units on there to keep the housing affordability, that could be eligible project from 150,000 per eligible unit there. And last manufactured park reservation, it's a program that's been growing more in Oregon. It could be a program that could definitely grow in the future. We know a lot of the parks were impacted here in Southern Oregon here. Number eight, over the last month, HSC has identified 15 grants that believes that the town community could competitively apply for within the future grant cycles. After the review, the HST team will work on establishing again charts for specific applications that the city is interested in pursuing. Since the fire, the talent community has received loans and grant funding in order to help short-term gas, but also pave the way for sustainable, long-term development. Task number nine, our team can send a work in a development application that can help and establish an advisory fire recovery zone committee. The fire committee could help provide additional voices within towns, long-term recovering, focusing on including all talent community voices within the fire recovery process there. HSC staff continues to brief city leadership on the progress within the comprehensive and targeted scope of work over the last month. HSC staff also prepared for the county city councils a clean draft in this evening's staff report and progress PowerPoint here too. Lastly, we really believe that the talent community should consider a benefit from establishing a state of their one-stop dedicated recovery hub within its city administered by the City Town local nonprofit or business alliance to help in the recovery process. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
I just have one question. Oh, wait, I'll take Councillor Penamriff's question first.
Thanks, John. That was a lot. I know we've, but we've talked about, you prepared us well. We've talked about a lot of those things in the past. I, I'm wondering about the housing needs analysis and I'm not sure when we will be doing another one. And I don't know if that's a question for you or for Jordan, if that's in the works or in the plans.
John, do you mind if I take that one? Yeah, I think comes up on our, we are drafting a housing needs analysis. We have not gotten ready to publish. Trying to coordinate and figure out, you know, some potential of the fire recovery agility tasks that could be incorporated within that housing analysis. So that we go out, we're making sure we're getting what we need.
So you say drafting, you mean drafting an RFP?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any other questions? So this is really a question of, of the council. The, the graph that that John has, has drafted for the meeting tomorrow with OHS CS is is, I, I, when I, when we reviewed it and went over it and made our comments today, this Jordan, myself and John had a meeting over it. I felt like it accurately represented our conversations, but I just want to make sure that I have no objection from the council to present this on behalf of the council's comments. Does anybody have? I think it fairly, fairly represented our priorities. Anybody have any comments on that? I'm going, as I said, I, I really want to carry, carry the message from our community representatives and and this, this will be the document that I work off of. Also, I, I do want to say that there's a draft proposal before the committee already prepared and just from the staff collection, Alex Campbell's tour of all the different jurisdictions, he's done a really good job of collecting some good information and I do, I do see talent's voice on that draft. So that, 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 that might be helpful to know as well. Jordan?
I thought that occurred to me post-meeting. John, could you help define what a fire eligible area is? Does that mean just the burn scar or is all of talent? A couple of the eligibility requirements listed it?
You know, that's a question, Mayor, I would say to ask to the, to HUD tomorrow, to their team and OHS.
Great. And it's, and Mayor, if it is restricted to just the burn scar, you know, I, I would recommend that yourself and council lobbies for, you know, providing these programs across town, recognizing that we're such a small community that those, even if they didn't lose their home, we've had a lot of renters displaced and that these could be positive impacts community-wide.
Great point. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a great point because even when you look at some of the infrastructure, the challenges talent had with water and some of the communities, those water resources might be depending how they're defined in that eligible area. Jordan's got a good point, could be outside of the burn scars. I know in some of these areas in like the San Antonio County stuff, you know, they got miles to go to try and bring in, you know, services there. So I'd be interested to understand that a little further too.
Any other comments? I, I do also I do want to mention that we talked about shared equity quite a bit the other day and I did see that in the draft as well. So that was. All right. So with, without objection, I'm going to represent our, our community's represent, representatives on this document. And thank you everybody for your input and thank you for the meeting today with John and Jordan. And then John, most especially, thank you so much for taking the time to present, prepare this. It'll certainly make our comments more clear and I won't, probably won't drop anything off because of it. So thank you so much. Great work.
Very helpful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Take your team, please. We really appreciate the work you're doing. Your whole team is doing on this, on this front.
Thank you.
All right. So if there's no other questions or comments, go ahead and move on to item number nine is consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes and also, let's see, is there any, and the check register as well? If I ask if there's any editor comments at this time. Councillor Penamriff?
There was just a typo that I really liked a couple of times. We didn't, we didn't sign things. We sing, we authorize staff to sing them. And we are, we have such a talented staff. I'm, I'm sure that that's what happened. But yeah, I was just a typo sign.
It's eternal hope.
Yeah.
Anybody else? So I just want to, before I entertain a motion, thank you to the staff for, you know, always presenting us with summary minutes. We, we do maintain both audio and summary minutes. They, they both work differently. I think they're both very valuable and we know it's an extra effort to put in these summary minutes. We, we really appreciate it. So with that, I'll entertain a motion. Well, hang on, I got to get to the right screen. Councillor Perry Miller?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I can. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Councillor Clark?
Yes.
Councillor Penamriff?
Yes.
Councillor Greider?
Yes.
Councillor Pustizo?
Yes.
Councillor Byers?
Yes.
Councillor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Item number 10 is unfinished business and there's none. Item number 11 is 11.1 is a report on climate-friendly areas. Staff report?
Yeah, climate-friendly areas is a state mandate that's come out. And so Kristin is here to share with you just some outlines of what what climate-friendly areas mean and what it means for talent. I will emphasize that clarity around it is still forthcoming. DLCD is working very hard on figuring out how to apply this. So this is your first stop of getting info and much more to come. With that, Kristin would love to invite you up to share.
Thank you, Jordan, and thank you, Councillor and Mayor. So tonight, as you all have read, I'm assuming you've all read the, the background, Land Conservation Development Commission has launched the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities, which is in response to the Governor Brown's executive order 2004. It's, as Jordan said, DLCD is, is in the middle of rulemaking for Oregon's planning system in regards to these climate-friendly areas and all of the communities over 5,000 in population will be engaging in this. This, the climate-friendly areas will include our areas where residents, workers and visitors can all meet and, and really get their daily needs met. It's geared towards mixed-use areas in that it will allow a greater mix of high-quality pedestrian, bicycle and transit infrastructure. So really it's, it's going to be geared towards our downtowns. We, we will have the ability to, as the local jurisdiction, to determine where those locations are in our town. And this is going to be a two-phase project. We'll, we'll go through and be able to determine where these areas are. We're going to be working with consultants. DLCD will be supplying us with some consultants, but it will be quite a bit of work for staff as well. And then what, once we determine the areas, the next process is then to develop standards for those areas. So that will look like new ordinances and new regulations for those, those climate-friendly areas. The, the project, so the tasks include project scoping, community engagement. That's the first portion of it. The, that will include consultant deliverables. So DLCD is, is, is supplying us with consultants. We're not sure who those are. We're working with DLCD now. All the jurisdictions in, in the Rogue Valley are working to determine what that, what this all looks like. And keep in mind, DLCD doesn't really know what all this looks like yet. So we're all kind of working together to understand it. We have a deliverable as of June 30th, 2023, for the first portion of the, to actually determine what our CFAs are, which are again, our climate-friendly areas within our community. The task two will be the study area alternatives and assessment for the existing zoning and identify climate-friendly areas that need, that are needed in the cities. That's going to include public outreach, climate-friendly candidate study areas, public workshops. Our next task is the anti-displacement analysis. This is pretty important in that we don't want to displace residents who are members of the state and federal protected class. So that came about because there was some concern about if we make these areas really great and put all these nice, you know, infrastructure in the area, then it will outprice people who cannot afford to live in these areas. So that's, that's a big part of this, this climate-friendly area as well. And the final climate-friendly area, final task is the climate-friendly area designation study. That will basically, that's where we'll go into discussing what, what these looks like and what kind of ordinances and regulations are attached to these areas. There's two deliverables. One is the consultant deliverables, which has few memos and then the city's deliverables, which are public workshops. I also want to just, I've already gone over that this is a two-phase project. City staff will be required to hold several engagement meetings. We'll have to, we'll be in charge of arranging all those meetings, setting them up, noticing those meetings. The consultants will be there to help us out and and again, we don't know who those consultants are. And I also wanted to mention to you all that there are related projects to these that we're already currently working on, which is our, our current zoning updates for affordable housing within the commercial zone districts. And we have the, of course, the talent urban renewal area boundaries. And then there's the OR 99 Rogue Valley corridor plan that, which outlines the four goals associated with the objectives and guiding principles for planning. So that's pretty much what we have for the climate-friendly. We'll have more coming forward to council. It's, again, it's not going to, we don't have a first deliverable until June 30, 2023, but staff will be working on this in addition to our current workload and we're looking forward to working with the consultants. I'm happy to answer any questions if I can.
Councillor Penamriff?
Yeah, thanks, Kristin. That was, that was really well, well done. It's, it's a hard topic. I've been trying to cover it, but you, you did a great job. I'm wondering if, and forgive me if you said this and I blanked out, I'm wondering if you see an overlap for the climate-friendly areas and relooking at our transportation systems plan.
I'm not, I think, I think we're going to see an overlap in a lot of what talent's doing right now. We'll probably see a, a little bit of overlap if we do a housing needs analysis. If we redo that, we're going to see overlap. As I stated in the zoning ordinances that we update. So there's a talent is in a good position that we are a small community and we have a lot of this already in place. We've already reduced parking criteria for the, for the town. So it's going to be interesting to see what we have to do and, and if, if we get lucky and we can just designate areas and call it all good, but I'm not sure what that's going to look like. So, but it'll be, it'll be a good project. And but I think that we're headed in the right direction on what we're doing and I think we're kind of ahead of the game.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Kristin. Great report and, and it's kind of exciting. Oh, looks like, Jordan, did you raise your hand?
It was just a hot button. Didn't mean to.
Okay. Thank you so much. Great report and looking forward to, to, to seeing the continued work on it. I'm glad we're kind of in a position of flexibility where some of the work that we're already doing will, will, you know, support this work. It's always better than just doing it all over. So very fortuitous. Thank you so much. So with that, the next item on the agenda. Get off that report and come back to the agenda.
And Mayor, may, may I actually ask for relaxing the rules to move up item number 11.5, the pollinator project proposal to the next agenda item? We have a community member who's presenting tonight and I.
You want to respect it about time? Yeah. Any objections from council? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move pollinator project up to 11.2. Staff?
Thank you. So the city has been approached by Galinda Smith, who's a representative from both the City USA Pollinator Garden and various efforts across the city with a grand idea. And I will let her take it away while I manage the PowerPoint. Galinda, welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm Galinda Smith and I live in Talent. Good evening, Lady Mayor and members of the council. Currently, Portland, Oregon has the world's smallest park. It's two feet in diam, and, and diameter. It's a circle and called Mills End Park. It was established in 1948 and it is in the Guinness Book of World Records as the smallest park. This park was discussed during a talent public arts committee meeting back in December. And at the Christmas tree lighting, our mayor and her lovely wife Heather shared this with me and wondered if talent could create something of this caliber, upon which I went to design. upon which I went to design a slightly smaller park, obviously, because we want to be to uh Portland. And it's namely a hexagram, um, think honeycomb inside a two-foot diameter circle. Portland's area of this park is 452 square inches. Ours would be our model, 374 square inches, which is 78 square inches smaller. As we are a very dynamic B city, the second in the US, if not the world, it makes sense to put pollinator plants into this park. I chose four native plants. They are California fuchsia, Pennstemon, pussy toes, Louisiana cisco you, and one hybrid, which is a mock orange because the native hybrid would be too big. All these plants are extremely drought resistant and once established need hardly any or no water at all. Our B, one of our B city members, Jim Thompson, put my design into this beautiful graphic. As you can see, the graphic depiction and um surrounding the park are hexagonal stepping stones, which we would create with the talent maker city. A few days ago, I broached this with Ally French, the director of the Maker City, and she was very enthused and would absolutely be on board. We propose a wrought iron fence on the outer periphery, actually on the outer periphery of the stepping stones as a safety barrier. Plus, it would look very nice. And our incredible city manager, Jordan, arranged a meeting between um myself and other B city members and wonderful Brett Marshall and Robert Slaton. And so yesterday, after perusing various potential sites, we all felt that Valley View Drive, I think that's what it's called within the pedestrian um i- area would be an ideal location. It is sheltered by two elevated green um spaces on both ends. And Robert and Brett said that the existing cobblestones could easily be removed or cut out to perfection. I am personally committed to supply the soils or amendments, uh biodynamic compost. Yes, I forgot. I would propose that this would become still first and only biodynamic park in the world. Um, and uh many of you know I'm a biodynamic gardener all my life. Um, yes, and um that would, would really add some more clout to it. And the city would however have to provide the resources for the stepping stone materials and the fence. Members of B City slash Garden Club will do the planting and perhaps with the help of our community artists create some exquisite stepping stones. We have kept this project very secret because we do not wish um copycats from surrounding communities. And uh finally, I want to leave you with a haiku that I recently wrote about this potential park. A haiku, for those of you who are not familiar, comprises of three lines. The first has five syllables followed by seven, followed by five. Small is beautiful. A park for pollinators. B city talent. And with that, I put it into your tender, loving hands.
Well, uh, I uh, I appreciate the shout out from me and my lovely wife uh on this, but uh uh, this is, this is pure Glenda. And uh for that, we are very grateful for your imagination and your priorities and uh and your great work for our community. Are there any questions? Uh, Council Panomov.
Yeah, I, I think this is wonderful and ingenious and you're such a great marketing force for our town, Glenda. Thank you. Um, I was a, I was a, I wasn't sure how to picture the fence and it had little kind of spikes that, you know.
When the, when this picture was created, the fence was just, you know, a little addition. But we don't need spikes at all, but just a nice barrier that could be a permanent one rather than one that disintegrates. And by the way, the photos that you see that Jordan put so nicely up for us, that is the actual template of the park. I made it to, to um uh, to size and it's very small. Of course, that does not include yet the stepping stones around it. But it is a very small area, but you know, what do you expect? It's the smallest park. And wouldn't it be great if we could get into the Guinness Book of World Records, make it a pollinator park and biodynamic as well? I mean, it's a win-win-win for our community uh being a B city and it could create quite an attraction.
Absolutely. I think, I think my only concern about the um because I'm a very clumsy person and if there's a place to fall, I will fall. So I just don't want to be impaled on anything when I'm tripping over myself.
I, all I can say is this spiky kind of uh suggestion was just, you know, just to put a wrought iron fence in there. We can make this as friendly and wood and safety friendly as, as can possibly be.
Thanks, Glenda.
Now, we also would like to get to that early because summer is too late to plant. Uh, you know, the, these are in, in their nascent delicate plants. So we want to get this project going as soon as possible. It was your permission, of course.
Mayor, you're muted. We didn't hear what you just said.
Senator Pesezo?
Hi, thanks, Glenda. This is pretty fun. I got, had a sneak preview a while back. She told me in confidence and I've been not telling anyone. So I'm glad it's finally public. But uh, this is just maybe too into the weeds for this meeting, but you know, and I'm just wondering how the park boundary is defined. Once I saw this on the bricks, I'm wondering, are you just going to take out bricks for the hexagon? Are you going to take out bricks for the stones around the hexagon as well?
Yes, indeed. And this is where Brett and, and um Robert come in. Brett said, because they're individual stepping stones, they can easily be taken out. But furthermore, they have a, a mechanism, a machine, you know, don't quote me on, on the exact terminology, where they can cut out the exact uh size and then excise the stones within that and uh also where the stepping stones would be. And so it, and they can even, he suggested, Brett did, that we have uh a rounded this, this beautiful wrought iron fence. And we could have that in one piece and then they can cut out the rel- the relevant areas where it needs to be sunk into the, this uh footpath. So it would be sturdy and uh, yeah, that, that's what, what they assured me they could do very easily because I wouldn't have known that.
Okay, well, thanks. I just wanted to make sure we didn't go through all the effort and then get disqualified for the smallest park because we cut out too many stones, but it sounds like you've got it covered.
Yes, we do indeed, because we don't want it one square inch more than we have to.
And I would love to share with council as well. So the process is for the timing of the growing season. You know, we're really looking forward to council's permission to continue coordinating on this project. Um, to get it established, it will have to go through um a land use application process to designate it as a park. So that will come later um throughout the year is to formally make it a park. We will officially put it in our parks master plan.
Councilor Panomov?
Yeah, just one more question. There'll be a cost associated with this. Like, I guess we're not approving the cost tonight, but um do you have a guesstimate of what that would be?
No, I have no idea what a wrought iron fence of this size would be. The materials for the stepping stones would be relatively small because they're just pebbles and some cement. Uh, it's a special cement. I do know that. The fence, I have no idea and I don't also have a connection with someone who could potentially make that. And I hope that uh, that the wonderful people at the Talent Maker City would veer us in the direction of someone who could provide that fence.
Okay, uh, oh Brett?
I uh, I think the cost would be minimal and I think it could be covered uh with uh the maintenance budget that we currently have um for this year. Um, and as far as uh the stones, we would remove all the unnecessary stones and uh the ones that didn't line up uh directly, we would uh remove them and cut them and piece them back in, in the shape of uh the uh, the template there. And uh we would do the same for each one of the stepping stones so they could be uh installed flush uh with the other stones.
Thank you, Brett. All right, uh, so uh if there's no more questions, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion. Council Pesezo?
I move to direct staff to coordinate with community partners for the proposed pollinator project.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to uh direct staff to coordinate with the community partners for the proposed pollinator project. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Council clerk?
Yes.
Councilor Ponomov?
Yes.
Councilor Greider?
Yes.
Councilor Pesezo?
Yes.
Councilor Byers?
Yes.
Councilor Paramiller?
Yes.
Motion carries mayor.
Thank you, Hector, and thank you, Glenda. This is um this is a very pleasant um distraction from some pretty heavy work. And it's going to be a long time.
Thank you to every one of you. Thank you, thank you.
All right, so uh with that, um, we're going to, um, that was item 11.2, 11.3 is now a discussion of council priorities. Um, let me make sure I have that title correct. One second. Discussion of council priorities on capital improvement project. Staff?
Yes, we have officially begun the process of creating a new capital improvement plan. So as the projects that we want to prioritize funding and achieving over the next kind of five to 10-year window. We are working with RH2, who is our engineer, to make this plan. You know, they've compiled all of our, our master capital plans together. We have a list of over 100 projects long. And so we will now begin the process of kind of sorting those projects and prioritizing those that we want to achieve within the, the more near-term horizon. So as staff is creating the first draft of that prioritization, you know, we're really hoping to look to council tonight to help us um understand your priorities to be used as part of the filtering and prioritization process. You know, once we have a draft of that project list, it'll come before you as council for further feedback and eventual approval. I did go ahead and in the staffing report and here on the slide, put some examples of some priorities that council may, may name or help identify as a top priority. I took these, you know, close to directly from our goal setting that we did and the goals that we just recently passed. So I'd love just to turn it over to you all for, you know, five to 10 minutes, just to share out loud kind of the capital investments that you all really see and want to focus on. Um, and we'll just gather that input in and, and use it as part of that first draft.
All right, any comments from uh council? Council Panomov?
Oh, I need the, I need the. Number two, no. No, that's okay. Um, uh, no, I was just going to say, I was really happy to see a multimodal transportation because I think that's really um uh not just an important thing, but also um sometimes we just think about fixing the streets. And this way, we're thinking about reimagining the city more for pedestrians and bicyclists and, and differently abled people um and, and supporting transit and that aligns so nicely um with climate friendly areas as well. So I just wanted to give a big thing set, thumbs up for that. Um, but I did kind of have a question. So I was trying to, so I was thinking about, you know, the, the CIP plans we've looked at in the past. I'm wondering whether I've not, I'm kind of separating housing out a, as something different, not really a CIP, but maybe I'm just not thinking about it right. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about how uh, uh, the CIP would support um housing higher density.
Yeah, mostly it's around when we have higher density or we have additional housing, you know, those are going to be additional water users in our system. And do we want to, you know, upgrade our water pipes? Do we want to put more resilience in place expecting to have a higher population? So more the infrastructure that supports the housing in terms of water use, transportation use and stormwater.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful.
Let me ask a general question. My, yeah, I'm not muted. Um, you know, we've talked an awful lot in different meetings about um creating, you know, fire, uh, greater fire resiliency. Um, we've talked about uh upgrading our equipment so fires can be fought if, if they do happen. We've talked about resiliency to prevent fires in the first place um and projects that um, that would create a more uh fire-hardened community. I, I, I hate using that word. I don't know why. Um, but, but it makes sense. Uh, so is there room for the CI, in the CIP for um for those kinds of projects and discussions?
You know, I think, you know, and Brett, I would want to invite you to interrupt me if I'm not sharing correctly. You know, CIP is specifically for capital projects. And so if a capital project helps us naturally be more fire resilient, and I'm thinking, you know, a capital project could be installation of additional fire hydrants. Capital project could be an additional water reservoir so that we have more water on hand.
Exactly. Where, that's exactly my thinking and, you know, just making sure that our systems uh, you know, have um all of the equipment for the appropriate pressure and, and, you know, all of those upgrades that um, you know, that have been talked about since the fire happened in all of the different circles. So um, I just feel like um identifying the type of CIP projects that would serve that end is one piece of the puzzle. And, and maybe just focusing on that and discussing that, we, we may unearth some, some projects.
If, if I could piggyback on that a little bit?
I'm sorry, I didn't see the hands. Council Panomov and then Council Byers.
Um, and I, it just because what my thought was, when you were talking, I was thinking about purple pipes. I was thinking about gray water. And I'm, I'm, I don't know enough to say whether it's really appropriate for the city versus the region to do this or how, but I, it would be great if we could um investigate that and see what we can do. Um, because I'm, I'm sure that we can do something.
Thank you, Council Panomov. Council Byers?
Thank you. So, um, I don't know what the, the strategizing process is um with you leading the city staff. But I do think one um exercise that I think would be really interesting to see the outcome of is prioritizing projects that meet more than two of the goals that we have outlined here. How far can we get with our limited resources, especially that of time for looking at what we're trying to accomplish in the next five years?
You, Council Byers, I'd also love to respond, you know, a priority that staff identified are projects that are bundled. You know, if we're going to do an improvement to a roadway that also has a water pipe that needs replacing, that also needs sidewalks put in. You know, as staff, we would like to prioritize the package, you know, rather than an individual project.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd be really interested in seeing some comparisons of like what that looks like to think about um prioritizing projects with this lens versus that lens and just seeing what floats to the top literally um when comparing all those different types of prioritizing.
Council Panomov?
Yeah, I just want to um expand on that, applaud that point. And, and it, it seems to me that most of the time, if you bundle these things together, you save some money. So um, and also convenience to everybody. So yeah, I just think that, that's a superb point. So thank you for that.
Thank you, everyone, and always go. Thank you, everyone. And always feel free as as ideas come to you. You're always welcome to email me or email Brett as well. He is the person on this project. And we'll factor that in and, you know, our goal is to get a list to you all, or at least some subsets of lists in the April 20th meeting.
Many thanks to you all for working on this. This is a an overdue project and long overdue actually and it's great to see this coming up. All right.
And so Greider has her hand up, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Counselor Greider?
I just had a question. Is is some of the clean energy work in in programs separate from this?
Yeah, you know, historically, the clean energy has been largely grant funded. You know, we're in conversations about bringing in those projects potentially into the CIP as well as part of our sustainability goals. Particularly since a lot of the grant funding that we've received is falling a little short due to just rising costs with supply chain issues and context of the world.
And that just brings a point up as well that I would imagine that some of the environmental sustainability projects really intersect with some of the fire resiliency projects. Especially when you're talking about making our city more drought resistant and those sorts of things. Does that seem, so it seems like there's a bundling opportunity there.
I think that points exactly to Counselor Byers' point of, yeah, which can meet multiple goals.
Great. All right, any other comments or questions? Let me pull up my screen to make sure I'm not seeing another hand. Great, thank you. And thanks to staff. We're excited about seeing this and we'll we look forward to the other end of the CIP process. When we get to review it and support it.
Thank you. And Mayor, I'm going to air a quick note. I'm going to pass off the tone right now to Hector to stand in my stead. I just have to run to do a quick break and I'll be right back.
Okay, very good. Does anybody else need a break? We can, it's been a long night. We can take a three minute break if that's helpful.
I think it'd be a great pattern.
I want to go ahead and take three minutes and and come back in three minutes, okay?
And Mayor, I just want to share, you know, I forgot to check in to see if there's questions from the audience on any topics.
Yeah, me too. Thank you. Hector, have there been any sign in sheets tonight?
No additional signing sheets, Mayor, although I do see a question from Debbie Rappaport. And I'm assuming she's referring to referring the question to Gerlinda.
I think it was, wasn't it? I think it was for Kristen, actually.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. And maybe we can just forward that to Kristen and she can answer. We don't have any means to do that, do we? Now that I think about it, you don't, this doesn't capture their email or anything, does it?
No, it does not. I do have Debbie's information and can reach out directly.
Okay. Interesting. So I think as we all gather back here, I will look to the attendees and see if there were any speakers on any of the agenda items that we've had so far. One of them so far would be the the CIP. You just raise your hand if you have any comments on the CIP. All right, seeing none. Just waiting on Counselor Byers and then we'll. There she is. Right, the gang's all here, so let's go ahead and jump right back in and yeah, so item 11 point. Wow, let me get to my discussion. Okay, 11, what was 11.3 was the development agreement request for the railroad crossing application that has come off the agenda. So now what is 11.4, right? Am I counting this right? Still gee whiz. Is the pizza party at Arbor Day? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, overlooked detail. This for this fair Saturday that we're planning is that these volunteers might get hungry and especially the since the talking is going to start at 10. And which means we probably won't even be working until 10:30. And we got 85 trees to plant, should probably plant on some fuel for these volunteers. So I wanted to request some money from the Council Discretionary Fund for pizza and other refreshments if necessary. This was not a recommendation from the committee itself, because like I said, it was overlooked. But I am making the request now. And could could say for, you know, up up to 500 bucks as necessary, depending on how many people are there. And I guess I can see if anybody has any questions about that notion.
Jordan, do you have any concerns from the staff point of view?
No, no objections. I'm just going to go ahead and look up the Grotto's hours right now to know if we should preorder or not.
All right, any anybody have any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Clark?
I move to allocate up to $500 from the Council Discretionary Fund to provide food and refreshments as necessary at the Arbor Day celebration.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to allocate $500 from up to $500 from the Council Discretionary Fund to provide food and refreshments as necessary to the Arbor Day event. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Counselor Pizza, Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Panamor?
Yes.
Counselor Greider?
Yes.
Counselor Pesteza?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Parry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Hector, that was the highlight of the evening, truly. Thank you.
I double checked the roll. There is no Counselor Pizza.
If there ever is, I can't wait to meet him. Great. Hey, are we doing that? So we did the proclamation for Arbor Day already this year, didn't we?
That was last year.
Wow, that happened yesterday. So would you guys make sure that you put the proclamation in my box just so I can grab it?
Great. I'll have a copy with me at the event.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, pizza party at Arbor Day. Thank you, everybody. And so that should conclude the new business. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is item number 12, other business and future agenda items. Anybody have any other business for the future agendas? Wow. This used to be a really heavy topic back in the day.
I would like just to share a separate topic to council to inform you all for the April 20th meeting. There's a potential that I will be in transit in an airport for that meeting. And so Hector will be our our guide and I'll be listening in with Lucero acting as our city reporter potentially for that meeting.
That's great. That's fantastic. Hector, it's going to be fun. Get up to some monkey shines that night with the boss out of town. Okay, so nothing on other. With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting then at 8:47. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much, Hector.
I'll see you, Jordan.